Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
I'd like to call this meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann. Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Greotop.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. First, on our agenda, do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the human service? Make the motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now is the scheduled time for the Human Services Committee to hear any citizen comments they would have about any human service committee items or areas of concern. Is there anybody here that would like to address us as the Human Services Committee? Seeing none? Next, updates. Do we have any updates? Conceptual initiatives? Old business? So our first new business item is the contract renewal with Sen-Gage.
Sen-Gage.
Sen-Gage, okay? Learning for Gail courses. This is a contract for the library.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation celebrating the 50th anniversary of the St. Clair County Council on Aging, and this is for final action tonight. We have the Executive Director of the Council on Aging, Scott Crawford, with us tonight. Scott, could you address us, please, about your 50th anniversary?
It is my pleasure to be the Executive Director at this time at the Council on Aging. We celebrated our 50th anniversary last Thursday evening. Thank you to Carrie for attending. It was kind of interesting because we had, for the 50 years that the agency's been in existence, we had 42 years of executive directors in attendance that night, which is kind of impressive. The Council on Aging started 50 years ago as a small nonprofit, mostly socialization programs. Started out with 50 people. The Council on Aging now serves about 10,000 seniors a year through a variety of different programs: in-home services, chore, home repair, personal care, transportation. Our transportation alone last year gave 65,500 rides to seniors across St. Clair County with a fleet of buses traveling just shy of 384,000 miles. So from those 50 people playing cards back in 50 years ago to what we do now is pretty impressive. And I'd venture to say St. Clair County has kind of always been at the forefront of aging services, and that's because of our senior services millage, which is up for renewal, thank you, this August. And we were one of the first in this, we were the first in the state to have the senior services millage. First dedicated senior transportation in the United States happened here in St. Clair County. So it's proud to celebrate our heritage.
Thank you, Scott. I have the privilege of representing the County Board of Commissioners on the Council on Aging, and I also represent you on SEMCOG. And one of the things I was really surprised to hear is that if Wayne County, and Macomb County, and Oakland County, belonging to SEMCOG, you would think that they would have their own voted millages, but they don't. And in many ways, our programs really exceed those of those counties, you know, adjusted for population. It's just been one of those agencies and one of those projects that has really made our community noteworthy, not only in the state and across the nation. So congratulations, Scott. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the St. Clair County Recovery Community and the Peer Ambassadors. Is there a representative here tonight to receive that?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
On the first one.
Oh. A motion for the first one. I make a motion that we approve for final action.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Shall we do the proclamation for the recovery community and the Peer Ambassadors now also?
Make a motion that we do it for final action.
Support.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I support it, too. So we're just talking here. Thank you for inviting us here and for the proclamation and for anybody that, just to, what we've been invited to do is the St. Clair County Health Department approached Blue Water Recovery and Outreach Center to help create awareness on the local hepatitis outbreak, which is the largest hepatitis outbreak in Michigan's history. And what we've accomplished so far is produced some recognition from the CDC and increased a lot of numbers through vaccinations, which is one big way to combat the outbreak. And so we've produced some results that we've been reported to us, such as the Last Resource Fair. Prior to the Peer Ambassador Program with Blue Water Recovery and Outreach Center, they had 40 vaccinations at the Last Resource Fair. At the latest one, with us present, they had over 100 vaccinations. So those are the kind of metrics and things that have been happening behind the scenes to create awareness and help combat this hep A outbreak. Thank you. Is that it?
As a member of the recovery community, we want to thank you, and we would like to thank the Health Department for getting us involved in this. We're very grateful to work with the Health Department and to be able to reach out and make a difference in the community, and also to let you know that people in recovery are here, we're here to help the community, to break the stigma, and to let you know that we are active members of making this an even better community. Thank you.
Should we hand out proclamations?
Yes.
Scott, I have your proclamation here, too, in case you don't want to wait through the whole meeting and receive it. Are there any other human service matters to come before us this evening? Hearing none, could we have a motion to file for information only? The St. Clair County Health Department may points of interest.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So who is our, well, you're committee now?
Yeah.
That's right. That's why we sit so close. Call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamian.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann. Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Dunn.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Greotop.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
We have motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. We don't have any cards at this point. Does anybody have any? Seeing none? Are there any updates? No updates. No conceptual initiatives? We have no old business. New business: animal control operations.
Just a few words on animal control and some of the topics that are going on, and had a very, very good meeting with County Administrator Haptine and Commissioner McConnell here last week with Under Sheriff Buckley and, I believe, Captain Bliss. Just want to go over a couple notes, a little bit of history with Sheriff's Office involvement in animal control. Everybody with the exception of Howard, Commissioner Heidemann, and Commissioner Bohm, they were the only two on the Board of Commissioners when we took over. Everybody else has kind of been this way since you got on. But historically, the animal control has always been run by county administration, and I couldn't tell you how far back that goes. I've been with the county 30 years, and it far dates me. But in about September of 2010, under County Administrator Groh, and there was significant issues at the animal control, and they asked us to come out and do a comprehensive review of some of the internal issues going on. And that review took place right up until just about November of 2010. We found a number of really concerning issues on operation, things that were all fixable, and we worked very, very hard to fix these. And in the end of our evaluation, at that point, recommendation was made to turn it over to the Sheriff's Office. And I think in part because we've always been attached to the hip. At 4:01 in the afternoon, when animal control personnel goes home, we would pick up the animals. We would have our dog sticks. We'd respond all over the county and do that with keys to the building. We would handle that right up until 8:00 the next morning, seven days a week, because we're always working as well. We would also handle all of the criminal complaints. So we've had a tie, as well as the inmate labor. That's been a steady benefit to the animal control for many, many years as well. But some of the issues we found when we took over, there was significant issues with the monies attracting. There was missing funds. We did have a internal audit, forensic audit, I might say, at Oakland County. We did not have the ability to seek charges, but we were able to put in safe measures so this sort of problem wouldn't happen in the past. And that was probably the biggest problem we came up with, was some of the lack of tracking out there of controlled substance and funds. And surprisingly enough, with all of the licenses that are issued throughout the county, there's a significant amount of money that goes in and out of that building. So after the investigation, we eliminated the HR issues. We updated the records management program. We extended first Saturday hours, and then we switched to a late night during the week after we just weren't seeing the traffic on Saturdays. Daily reports were submitted every day. Immediate control of our substances in a safe so we could track where the narcotics were at out there. Created information sharing for lost animals, caught up on months and months of data that wasn't entered, and we did that through inmate labor for the most part. We brought out female inmates as well that could enter data, and they worked for a couple months a year. Revamped the census program. We performed that then by uniform sheriff deputies and by animal control officers, and that resulted in direct enforcement. It really helped when we had uniformed reps out there doing that and tracking it. Created a bulk mailing for license renewals, and the license renewals, it increased the revenue by 100,000, and we accounted for all the revenues. That was some of the other problems, is that everybody in the brother were selling licenses, and we didn't know where the money was and if it ever got dropped back off and if it got deposited. So we streamlined that tremendously. I might note that we've always been within or under budget in the years we've had it, and we've never failed a state inspection, and that's something we're very proud of. And we've had a number of surprise inspections, and the inspectors note Stephanie on a first-name basis, and that's something I'm very proud of. We initiated a new shelter program to manage this license and revenue, and we worked with the county auditors to do a yearly audit, which is just a godsend. We do that at the Sheriff's Office, we do it at the Drug Task Force, we do it at Evidence Vaults. Audits are a good thing, and I know that you're a former accountant, so I'm going to throw you a plug. Audits are a good thing for everybody, and we embrace that. That wasn't necessarily the case. We continued, and we increased our inmate labor. We never had females there, and now we have females and males. Last year, just to give you a conservative number, our inmates work about six hours a day, 365 days a year. They're a captive workforce. And if we paid a minimum wage, which is conservative, it'd be about 92,000 a year, and we do that in inmate labor. So it's good for the inmates, and it's good for the county, and we've done that for many years, and we've increased it. Probably the biggest positive I've seen is our volunteer program that was created with the help and the foresight of Carol Miller and the crowd there, and that has really taken hold with community outreach. I think about our Empty the Shelter program. I think about our License and Vaccination Clinic. Very, very proud of those, and I think there'll be many more of those on the horizon. We took over this in 2010. Obviously, our background was law enforcement, and our goal was always humane treatment of animals in St. Clair County. That's never changed. Our euthanization rates, they've dropped dramatically. They have, year after year after year. We've also had the ability to do many building upgrades. I know a couple of you were out there for the ribbon cutting. I know Commissioner McConnell was. We were fortunate enough to get a nice donation from the Rose Cousins Fund. She is a neighbor of mine growing up, an Emmett girl, and she felt kind enough to have a special place in her heart for animal control. With that said, there's been lots of discussion about changes, and how do we get animal control to the next level, whether it's Sutherland County, whether it's a department head? And I will just say that this has always been run by a department head, except for this window of the last eight years. And that reason we were thrust in, again, was because there was crisis. I absolutely endorse this going back to county administration, and I will just share a few things. We've got a 500-bed jail with federal inmates, and we are in our inspection season. We've got an opiate epidemic that everybody's aware of. We doubled our drug task force, and we're not scratching the service. We're not even close. We've got 720 miles of jurisdiction. We handle about 45,000 to 55,000 calls for service a year. We are busy. We're the largest law enforcement jurisdiction with responsibilities in the county, and we also have 110 miles of international border. Just last night, we had a double drowning. Unfortunately, we are in the water season, and we are pressed to our limits on manpower. So with that said, we would be happy to stay partnering with county administration via inmate labor, picking up animals, handling criminal complaints, because we are attached to the hip in the criminal side. But we certainly feel that if the animal shelter wants to rise to the next level, we would endorse this going back to the mothership of county administration, and let us focus on what we do best, and that's cops and robbers. That's what we do, and we have got a full plate, and that would be my respectful request to the board.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We do appreciate you get thrown into a task to clean up dirty laundry, right? And that's what, when you took it over, and I wasn't there, but when I go back and look at the paperwork and everything that was involved, that was a big task, and you did a great job, and we're thankful for that.
Well, we appreciate that.
And I think you're right. If we're going to go to another level, and I, you know, where this all comes about, you know, 20 years ago, you didn't hear these things. Social media's brought so much to the forefront, and it's just time. I think it's time that we have a person that's going to be in charge, and who that person is? We think it's going to be Carl. We haven't told him yet. [laughter] I think it falls under your committee.
Might be a better chance than being inmate labor.
Right. But thank you.
You're welcome.
And so where it goes from here, I'm assuming that we're going to ask Carrie to look into hiring an administrator for this position?
Sure. You know, since one of our prior meetings where the board directed me to gather some information, come back with options, I have had an opportunity to meet with the Sheriff's Department Administration. I've met with our current volunteer groups and some current volunteers, as well as some local rescues and some other individuals that have expressed interest in different animal control improvements. What I have overwhelmingly found is pretty much everyone I sat down with had the same end goal. There was differences of opinion on how we should get there. However, everybody feels the volunteers are very important. You know, even when I sat down with the sheriff and his group, they have a whole list of goals and items on their to-do, their bucket list for animal control, but as the sheriff stated, they just don't have the existing staff or resources with everything else going on to devote someone full-time to going through that checklist. So at this point, for them to accomplish, you know, just the goals they had on their list and some of the other ideas I've received from some rescues and our current volunteers, they also have a whole project and packet of things that they would like to accomplish as well. I believe a director would be able to lead the charge in that.
Okay. So I guess the next step would be to ask for a motion to direct our administrator to look into filling this position?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we direct administration to move animal control back under administrative control, and that the administration then seeks out for us and hires a director, and I would make that motion for final action.
Support. So we have motion and support. Is there any other discussion? Yes.
I would like to take just a minute and thank the sheriff and all of his people for what they have done out there. The things that the sheriff set up there tonight, the things that you said, and the things that Carrie said are all absolutely true, that he has done a wonderful job out there of doing what we asked him to do, and I believe in all honesty, maybe he stayed on longer than he really wanted to because we needed him at that particular time. But in reality, he's absolutely right. He should be cops and robbers out there, and with the opioid crisis that we're facing in this community right now, and some of the other things that are going on with the summer coming, the drownings that we had yesterday, those are the things that the sheriff needs to be involved in. And he did what we asked him to do. He cleaned up the animal control, and now we're going to see if we can't take it, as you said earlier, Commissioner McConnell, to the next level. But I personally would like to thank the sheriff, and I think everybody in this audience, maybe give the sheriff a thank you for what he has done out there.
Motion, and we have motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B, the Fiscal Year 2018 Marine Safety Grant Agreement. This is an annual grant. It's an $18,000 federal portion, or 48,000 federal. That is 100% funding, and 86,000 state, which is a 25% match of 28,667, which we accounted for. This is a little bit less than 2017's, not much, like $8,000 or $9,000 less, I think, than what we've got in '17, and so we just need to send this on to the full board if we can. Aye, so move.
Support.
We have motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7C, Resolution 1811, establishing a commissionary fund. We've had a commissary fund, Commissioner. Commissionary? Commissionary.
You don't have a fund.
We had more money we weren't told about? That's right. Commissionary fund? So there's a commissary fund that is from the jail, and in the commissary, the money is dedicated, and it goes back to the inmates. So in this fund, it's been, the accounting has always been proper, and during the last audit, they just said we didn't, they couldn't find a resolution where we actually said that's what we were going to do with it. So that's what we're looking for, is a resolution, 18-11.
Make a motion, we send that on to the full board? Second.
We have motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Fiscal Year 2019 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Certification, Application, and Budget. This is $290,000. It's an increase over last year, and it's just a follow-through of the grant agreement. I'd make a motion to move it to the full board?
Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7E, 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant Addendum. There's a $9,480 increase, and we're just restructuring from a money that's part of wages to equipment.
Make a motion, we send it on to the full board? Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters? I just have one. We did apply for a grant through the Community Foundation for the vests and the items that we talked about at the Emergency Management Breakfast, and we were turned down at this time. I don't think it means that they aren't willing to support or help us at some point. It might need some restructuring, re-tweaking. I got to talk to Jeff Freeland. Sometimes we get used to asking for a lot of money, hoping you can get a little. Maybe, we might have scared him a little bit, and so we're hoping that we can get, maybe get a little something there. So at this point, we're still working on trying to come up with $60-some thousand so that we can outfit our fire departments, you know, with the equipment that they would need to go in safely if there's any type of an active shooter situation, so.
Greg?
Yes?
Did you make money on the golf outing, and was that money earmarked for that program? Is that what it was marked for?
You know, that...
The Emergency Services Breakfast always raises money at the golf outing, and they earmark it for something along those lines.
We have a meeting Thursday, so I don't know what their funds were going to be used for.
And we did childcare seats one time and something else another time. This looks like a perfect use for it.
Sure. All right. We need a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to call the Environmental Public Works Committee of June 7, 2018, to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann. Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Greotop.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Item 2, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve as...
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we will go to updates.
Looks like we have one from Aviation Express, FBL.
Well, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Brad Schreiner, and we, my company Aviation Express, we provide the fixed base operations out at the airport. We've been there close to five years now. Kathy and I have worked together very closely. We've worked together very well as a team, and we've brought the airport up to today's standards. What, I brought a PowerPoint presentation more to show the people what we are doing out there and what we're up against, and I would like to... we are doing out there and what we're up against. And I would like to, with each slide, if there's any questions about any of it, I'd be happy to answer that. Okay? This is our passenger lobby. When the pilots come in from the airplane, they're, the crews and their passengers come through this lobby. We've come a long way at this airport. This was a maintenance facility at one point. It was quite a mess, but we've cleaned it up quite well. There's still a little room for improvement, but we've done very well. This is a pilot lounge. Normally, when the crews come in, they drop their passengers off. Their passengers have business for the day. So, we have a place for them to relax. There's a computer in there and a TV and try to suit their needs a little bit. We have a crew car out at the airport that they can go out to lunch with. This is the corporate hangar. Again, I'm showing some of these pictures because I haven't seen a lot of you out there. And I don't know if you know what we do out there, but these are some of your facilities. This is the hangar we use for the larger aircraft and a lot of transient stuff coming in and out that we hang there there. This is inside. I don't know if you can see it very well, but kind of a before and after. Cleaned that place up a little bit. It was a mess. When I first came to St. Clair, this is the picture of the fuel farm that everybody was looking at when they deplaned. So, the customers and crews were looking at this. Today, this is more of what we're looking at. Now, we've cleaned that area up quite a bit. And that's just kind of a reminder of what we do out there in the winter time. It's not really easy. We have, we need access to those tanks on a daily basis. So, again, this is part of the things that we have to deal with at the airport. This is just, you know, the, I'm just kind of throwing a plug in here that, you know, we're not just out there pumping gas. We're moving airplanes and it takes experience to do that. Some of the current, or the pictures that I'll show you here, you'll see the complexity of some of these airplanes that we have to deal with. Part of the things we have to do is fuel changes. This is our jet fuel truck. That's one of my line guys, Eddie. He's my manager out there. He's a very stable person, very reliable, and he gets the job done. This is, before we began our initial operations, I went out and I did some fuel sumping out of the farm. And we changed the filters. And the filter's right there, the right filter, that was the one that we pulled out of the truck compared to a new one. And that was all the sediment that was in one of the fuel tanks. These are all steel, pieces of steel that come out of the tanker trucks when they unload into our fuel farm. So, again, the quality control is such a high priority item for us because we're putting these in airplanes. We're not pumping gas at Meyer. This is the tug that we use, one of the tugs that we have to move these airplanes around. That's a long tow bar and we use multiple heads. We interchange the heads on them. There's one of the nose gears on one of the larger airplane that we hook up to. And again, there's just another one, just a different one. So, we really have to be well-versed in what type of aircraft that we're dealing with and how we're moving them It's an example of, you know, the aircraft that share the ramp. You know, you have a small general aviation airplane there compared to one of the corporates coming in. And there's one of our tugs moving that airplane around. Just some of the different aircraft we service. We had the Coast Guard airplane was in, one of the patrol helicopters. And again, these are just to give you an idea of some of the aircraft that we deal with out there and what we're up against. There's a picture of all different sizes. We go from a Gulfstream II down to a Learjet and then we're down to a King Air there. So, and those are all on the ramp on the same day. And every pilot has different needs. There's a, just to show you the size comparison, you can see Eddie there. That's the line guy marshalling that airplane in. So, we not only have to find a place on the ramp for him, you know, we have to get him chalked and get him fueled and all that, take care of all their needs. A smaller citation out on the ramp in front of the building. That's a Learjet inside our Again, just another airplane helicopter. We also handle some of the disabled aircraft. That guy grabbed the wrong handle on the right side. He grabbed the wrong handle and flattened his landing gear before he took off. And then, the airplane on the left, he landed hard and blew a tire out. So, we had to drag him off the runway. So, again, just all part of the services we provide. For the past three years, I've been working very hard on trying to get a charter operation out of this airport. That's one thing we lack. And I've finally worked with a colleague of mine and we partnered up and decided, well, if nobody else is going to go into it, we're going to do it ourselves. So, we went out and purchased this airplane. We're in the final stages right now of securing an FAA charter certificate. And we're hoping to be up and running by the middle of summer so we can operate charters out of this airport. That's an inside picture of that airplane. Six passenger cruises in the upper teens to 20,000 feet. Cruises about 250 miles an hour. That's the driver's seat. That's all I got.
Thanks, Brad.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
How many gallons of fuel do you think you go through in your ballpark-ish?
We're, we normally exceed 100,000. We have a goal of 108,000. We had 111 one time, but, you know, it's fluctuating up and down. So, we're averaging 100,000 here combined.
Commissioner Tamian, did you have a question?
Brad, several years ago, you know, we were talking about the market for basing planes here, hangars. And we were talking about developments at Detroit City Airport. Recently, there's been more stories about the fact that the city's considering closing the airport. Have you heard anything about that? Is that having a positive impact on our airport?
Well, Kathy's been getting a lot of calls on that. You know, we've solicited customers from there. It's really hard to pull a corporate flight department out of somewhere they've been for a long time. They might be forced out of there. You know, we have a lot nicer facilities and we've had a few people out looking at our facilities and they really enjoy it. But you have to get the owner of the aircraft to commit, to come in this way. And, you know, you say to them that, you know, it's going to take you 45 minutes to get to Pontiac or 40 minutes to get to Detroit City, where they can just as easily get out here for that. But they just, for some reason, they can't get there. They can't understand that. So, but we're trying. We're, you know, diligently still working at it and trying to make it happen. So, as far as what's going to happen at City Airport, I don't know. You know, there's federal monies involved there. So, they have grant assurances and they're supposed to do things. And that's more Kathy's arena. I, we fuel airplanes and drag them around.
You could, they could always do what Mayor Daley did with Miggs Field.
With, yeah. That would probably be a good option.
There's all these contracts that the airport's entered into. You guarantee their investment for a period of years for the grants and everything. And Mayor Daley became frustrated and wanted to close down the little Miggs Field at the edge of Chicago. So, one day, all the city underground equipment showed up and they just tore the runways up.
Yeah, in the middle of the night.
That's how Mayor Daley dealt with it.
Yep.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yeah, the, I just want to say that I chartered before the airport before Brad took over. And then, he did one, he did one last summer for me. And it's night and day. The service was just phenomenal, professional. He just, you know, he knows what he's doing. Represents you well out there, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Greitman?
McGreitman? Brad, with the charter service that you and your partner are starting to form up now, is that going to be with a King Air? Are you going to have a variety of planes available?
Well, yeah, there's going to be a variety. That was a King Air that we had there.
Yeah.
That was a King Air 90, a C-90B, that we're going to use that. And we also have what's called a pressurized Baron. It's a small, it's a Baron, but it's pressurized so we can go up into the upper teens and twenties.
What sort of destinations are you looking at? How far can you take off for?
It's a pretty regional airplane. You can do 1,000 miles.
Without refueling?
Yeah, nonstop.
Anywhere within 1,000 miles of...
Yeah, depending on the weight of the passengers and that type of stuff, you know, how much baggage you got. Four guys and golf clubs, we can take you wherever you need to go, Gary.[1193.13][1193.13](Laughter)
Any other questions for Brad?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad. Appreciate you coming in. Conceptual initiatives, nothing tonight. Old business, seeing none. New business. Item A, FBO contract renewal, Aviation Express.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send this contract on to the full board?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, Goodell's historical village building painting contract.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that this item be sent on to the full board?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions? Mr. Greitman?
Just a notice that, you know, almost, on a small bid of $31,000, a difference of almost $20,000 in bidding. And just to let people know, that's one of the reasons that we have it in our, in our policies, that we do go out for bids. You know, $20,000 on a $30,000 piece is a, is a pretty big difference, I think. And it's, this just shows why we go out and spend money wisely, I guess.
And I do know the owners of JB Fenner Painting and they're very reputable. They will do a great job for you. So...
Awesome.
Okay. Looking for a motion.
I'll move that we send it on to the full board?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, landfill restrictive covenant.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that...
Matt, do you, oh, go ahead. Do you want to get a motion first? Go ahead.
I would move that we send this item on to the full board?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Anybody need to ask Matt anything? He is in attendance?
The way I understood the item, it's really updating the state's requirements that we have for the restrictive covenant. We've always had a restrictive covenant at the landfill, so...
That's it?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, professional service agreement, city of St. Clair master plan update.
Make a motion and send to full board?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, Smith Creek landfill activities report.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and file the Smith Creek landfill activities report?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Other environmental public works matters. Seeing none. Information only, monthly parks and recs, financial documents.
Receive and file. Motion?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion receive and file packets?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're the only guy.
Yes. Go ahead. Now, you can go. Not as good as rushing, but that may define. Good evening. Like to call and order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Ways and Committee meeting. If the clerk would take the role, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman, Commissioner Bohm, Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing, Commissioner Greitman?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any citizens wishing to address judiciary, I'm sorry, yeah, judiciary and public safety? Ways and Means? Anybody wish to address on Ways and Means? No updates, no conceptual initiatives, no old business. New business, 7A, the health department vaccine storage units purchase.
I'd move to move it to the full board?
Support.
Anybody have any questions? I see we have some people from the health department here. Seems pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 1812 imposing 2018 property tax levy.
Mr. Chairman, I move this be sent on to the full board?
Support.
Anybody want to object to taxes or talk about them? Motion carries. All in favor, rather?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, health department manning table change.
I move that this matter be sent on to the full board?
Support.
They have the money to cover it, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D is the parking lot repair seal and stripe.
I move that this item be sent on to the full board?
Support.
All right. We've got a $40,000 number over and above the $36,000 bid, rough numbers, which includes a 10% contingency. Ron is in the audience if you need to know which particular parking lots they're talking about doing and when they're doing them. If not, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Employment agreement, library director.
I'd move, we move this to the full board?
Support.
Well, we barely got support on that one, Alice.[1538.75][1538.75](Laughter) Anybody want to talk about Allison or her contract? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? See it for another three, maybe. All right. Item F, the retainer agreement with Bem &amp; Bem opioid litigation.
Make a motion and send to full board?
Support.
Motion support. Gary, do you want to jump in on this for any reason at all?
A couple of things. I would do this for final action because we've talked about it before. And this, what it is, is I thought there are opioid cases, and you've probably seen it on 60 Minutes, there have been articles about what these companies have done. If they were here, I would tell them they should be ashamed of themselves. And the, so, there are different cases going. This case is not a class action case. It's called a multi-district case. So, what that means is you could have different cases pending in different districts. We're in the eastern district of Michigan, so we could have a case here. But what the courts have said, the Sixth Circuit, so that encompasses Michigan, Ohio, Illinois, whatever. And they've said, we're not going to have these cases pending all over the place and then run in our, in our circuit and run the risk of conflicting decisions on legal issues. So, they consolidated all the cases in a multi-district lawsuit before a judge in Ohio. And it's something worth reading about because he's very aggressive and he wants it moved and it's going to come to a trial pretty quick. You know, it's one of those things, if we got into a suit like this, probably all of you remember four or five years ago, and isn't necessary to get into who it was, and we weren't guaranteed everything, anything, and a whole lot hung in too long and they lost, and we settled for $2.2 million. So, you know, it's, if you're, if you're out, I can guarantee you, 100% of nothing is going to be nothing. If you get in, you never know. It could be like the tobacco litigation or whatever. And the county, in my estimation, without doubt, has incurred costs as a result of opioid addiction. If you just, just alone figure out what the jail has to deal with and the sheriff's department, that alone would justify, in my opinion, significant recovery without looking at healthcare costs, you know, all the things you have to deal with. So, I recommend that we get in this. I, you know, talked with the attorney and interviewed him. I really believe they know what they're doing and they're on it. And I think we might have, sooner's better than later, so I would do this for final action. That's my recommendation.
Gary, do, are they going after distributors, doctors, pharmacies? Who are they going after on this?
They're going after the four big manufacturers, distributors of opioids. And it's primarily OxyContin and Vicodin. Those are the two big ones. And, you know, you probably read the stuff where they were allowing their organizations to ship 3 million doses of Vicodin into a town with 42,000 people. Well, unless you're an idiot, I mean, you know what's going on. It's out on the streets being dealt to people. And it's prescription heroin is what it is. And it's a horrible thing in our country. And it's gotten wild out of control. It starts with people who get surgery or an injury, and then it's Vicodin, and it's maybe a little more Vicodin. And the next thing you know is they're done. And they can't get off of it. They don't get any help getting weaned off of it. And it's facilitated by these companies. The Justice Department at one point recommended criminal charges against them. And lawyers that had previously worked for the Justice Department went over the wall to the other side and backed them down. And it was just, it's bad. And I think they should be held accountable. That's my opinion.
I just, it's interesting. I just read a book and they were talking about this stuff. And they talked about how they used to use heroin and it was legal back in maybe the western days when they used laudanum and things of that nature, which was heroin, in a sense. used laudanum and things of that nature, which was heroin, in a sense, an opioid, and, uh, then they ended up outlawing it. Now, the drug companies have brought it back in illegal bill forms, so.
Yep.
Which is basically what it, what it comes down to, so.
I would amend my motion to be for final action.
I need to second to amend.
Second.
Okay, so this will be for final action. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Gary. Uh, County Insurance Fund Risk Management.
Could make a motion to move it to the full board.
Support.
All right, on this particular one, currently, we just have no procedure in place or formal, or we have a procedure in place, but no formal policy. So, what this does is it takes that procedure we've been using and puts it into a policy form.
Gives us a timeline, too, which is...
Yes. And that was a question I had, maybe this be directed at Kerry. If it, it stated in here that if it's not received within seven days of the incident, the claim will not be paid out of the self-insurance fund. Where would it be paid from?
In those instances, it would come from the department's budget. In most cases, we get claims timely. However, there have been instances where we have received a claim as much as six months after the incident happened. You know, if this is something where there could be a potential litigation or settlement, if we don't get information and all the interviews done timely, then it's difficult to get the information we need. And even for repairing equipment, we need to make sure we get three quotes, you know, as you stated before, to make, before any work is done. So, this is formalizing our current procedure in the form of a policy.
You presented this at the department head meeting already?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody's aware.
Yeah.
Any questions for Kerry or on that issue? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Corrections, Lieutenant Funding Request.
I move that this be sent on to the full board.
Support.
Support.
Uh, Tom, do you want to address this? Captain? Sorry, Captain?
(inaudible).
Captain Tom? Um, yeah, this, this is for the new position, right? I mean, the, the old position that hasn't been filled yet.
This, this is a position that was unfunded back in fiscal year 2013.
Okay.
Uh, with the unfortunate passing of Lieutenant Mike Green. And as you recall, the budget was, uh, in dire straits that, that coming budget year, and, and we made a very, very, very difficult decision in unfunding that to help the county reach the, the millions of dollars they needed to pull out of the budget. I think it was 1.2 or something that year, or was that? I think that might have been what they wanted out of us that year, if I recall right. But that happened back then, and then obviously, the, the budget hasn't, hasn't helped us out much of late. So, for the past number of years, we've been doing everything we can, doing our due diligence, trying to cut costs where we can, save monies where we can, but unfortunately, as you know, running the county, running the jail is like running in a microcosm of the county. You got all your infrastructures, you got your utilities, you got your fix, you got your various, you got the whole thing. It's a city in itself, and, you know, when the budget stays flat and the costs rise, it's tough to get caught up and find these funds. And in the past year, we've worked very, very hard with Danielle, um, in looking over what we have to find out if there's anything else, and I think we've squeezed that stone about as, as much blood as we can get out of that thing as it is. And we've reworked some contracts, uh, saved some cost monies like food service. We dropped, I think, the meal cost there is at least seven or eight cents a meal down, which is, I think, we estimated about $40,000 savings there. Um, we renegotiated some telephone contracts, and we got, uh, some guaranteed minimums in commission rate coming back from that, which increases our phone revenue by 100,000. Uh, we estimate, um, we have, we got video visitation coming in, which is going to pump some more money into it. What it is, we don't know at this point. Uh, we got more revenues coming in from tablets. So, in other words, what I, that's what I'm saying in a nutshell, is we've done everything we possibly can at this point, and at the same time, we've been struggling along trying to get this position filled because the lieutenant that's currently working is retiring and will be off the books in July, or I'm sorry, January, and he's going on terminal leave in November. So, that leaves no lieutenants, and I informed the sheriff a couple of weeks back, I am not going past December of next year. So, we have a succession problem now.
December of 2020?
2019.
Nice try, Bill.
Nice try, Bill. Nice try. I promised him till last December, if you recall.
You've been promising that for a long time.
So, anyways, uh, you know, we've done what we can, and, and, you know, we came hat in hand and, and kind of said, you know, we're looking for some help here. I think we've done everything. We've identified some funds. I think we, you know, Danielle, Kerry could address that probably better than I can at this point, but, uh, we, we, unless something happens, I think we've got it funded, so she can address that, but.
Any questions? Commissioner McConnell?
You know, we've looked at different items and different actions, and it, I like the analogy that you guys are like, right, a mirror image of us. When, when our SUVs take a tumble, we go down, and they're running a 500-bed jail in, when there's 300 people in a jail when you're used to having 500, then, right, the things go down. This year, with the fed inmates and every, and the ICE, um, people that are in there, the detainees, uh, everything's good. We, there's good money, and, and we should be covering all the costs, so, um, it could come out of the contingency fund if something happens, but that goes with everything. So, I think, I think it's all good. This is, especially with what's going on.
Yeah, something else to keep in mind with is increase revenue. We'll be able to pull things that directly benefit the inmates. Let's say buying more mattresses, more sheets, more sandals, more whatever. We would be able to pull out of those funds, which is normally taken out of the jail supply line item, whatever that is. I can't remember off the top of my head now. So, there could be some savings there, too, uh, as we move forward.
But we're going to see some movement with two retirements coming up, and so if we can get these new lieutenants in place.
Correct.
Get them working a little bit. What did we say would take? Almost October, if you're earliest?
Yeah, yeah. By the time we, yeah, the first one we can get in with the, I mean, it's posted now. It closed, actually, it closed today. Um, I believe there's six of the sergeants put in for it. Um, so now they've got the study period, then we have the testing, then we have the overall group. So, we're probably looking September before we can fill the unfunded one, uh, which would be immediately followed by, by Lieutenant Piondo's departure to do that.